Good evening. My name is Hal Johnson and I have the honor of serving as the Business Administrator of Cumberland County, and so I get to start off by saying welcome to all of you, Happy New Year. Thank you for being here tonight on behalf of the Commissioners and the county family, and Senator Testa, thank you very much for all of you being here tonight, and welcome, welcome. Now, you know, I just want to take, just indulge me for a moment, there's just a little bit of irony here, because there are two people on this stage who tomorrow night, 24 years ago, were also up here on this stage, okay? Commissioner Sorrow and me, in 2000, were up on this stage, being sworn in as freeholders, and so, to our, the irony of all of that, and to our long-suffering families, please give them, give them the sympathy that they deserve, but, but they, uh... So, it's just a small world, and it's wonderful and an honor to be here tonight, thank you very much. That being said, let's start with the festivities. Color guard, please. If you'll all stand, please.
And now, may we pledge allegiance to that flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Durham.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, all the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in the air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Father God, we thank you that you place a calling on each of our lives. We are deeply grateful for these who have called, answered the call, to serve our county, and to serve our citizens. We thank you, God, for this night and its solemn moments, but we also thank you that you have a hand in all that will take place, not only today, but through this coming year. Our prayer is for your blessing on this gathering, but also that you would bless our leaders with wisdom and understanding, with discernment and courage, to follow the lead that you give them. Father, thank you for their families who have made sacrifices for them to serve. Bless them, and lead us forward by your grace. You call us to pray for all those in authority over us, and so may we commit to support them in our prayers. And as we celebrate tonight, may we also look ahead to a bright and great New Year, because you are at the center of it, and they are serving you as they serve us, and make a difference. We give you thanks for all of these things, and we pray them in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Everyone, please be seated, please be seated. Now, our thought was, that if we started to introduce dignitaries tonight, and elected public officials, that we'd, we'd be very, very busy. So, what we are going to do, to order to maybe make the program just a little bit shorter, if all of the hard-working elected public officials would please stand up, so we can give you a single round of applause, if you would, please, please stand up. Thank you so very much for your service, and we also would like to recognize that county family, that works so hard every day. The administrators are here, the, what we call the team leaders and administrators, and what I would like, there's a whole bunch of them here, I'd love for all of them to stand up, so we can give you some recognition and a round of applause for all the hard work that you give us, and that you, that you help us with. Please, everybody, stand up, stand up. Thank you so much, our family team. So, that being said, we'd like to thank CC Tech for the refreshments that are in the back out there, so please don't leave, grab a, grab a water on your way out, but we would like to thank them, we would like to thank Rowan University for hosting, Rowan University of South Jersey, for hosting us here this evening, we would very, very much like to thank them for that, and... That being said, thank you, everyone, that, that's pretty much what you'll hear from me, but now, somebody that doesn't really need an introduction, but Senator and Chairman Michael Testa has some work to do tonight, because he has some people that he needs to administer an oath of office for, Senator Testa, I think Sheriff Donato is first.
Sheriff, we've done, we've done this once before, you know, you know the routine?
Yes, sir.
Please place your left hand on the Bible, and your right hand in the air, this is, in fact, a momentous occasion for you, I know your father is looking down on you, and is very proud, and I got the opportunity to speak to your mom a little bit earlier about that, and just please repeat after me, and I know you're somewhat of a softie, please don't cry.
I'm gonna try.
Okay. That was a little joke, folks. "I, Michael Donato..."
"I, Michael Donato..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...of the United States..."
"...of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"...impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...all the duties..."
"...all the duties..."
"...of the office..."
"...of the office..."
"...of County Sheriff..."
"...County Sheriff..."
"...for the, for the County of Cumberland..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations, Sheriff. Omari, for pictures' sake, should we stand in front, I would assume we probably should, right? Let's shift over there a little bit. You were given a, like, two minutes, but I just want to say something about the sheriff's election. I don't know that he could have had a much better week, week and a half, not only was he elected sheriff, his daughter became an NCAA champion and an All-American within a very short period of time, so, I don't know that anybody had a much better month or so than the new sheriff, Michael Donato, so it's my pleasure to introduce the new sheriff in town, Michael Donato.
Thank you, Senator, and I don't know, I don't know if it's better to go first or last, but we're gonna get through this. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to come here tonight, and celebrate yet another part of Cumberland County history. I am honored and thankful to have my family, my mother, and my mother-in-law here, and many friends sharing this special occasion with me. The past several elections have proven that hard work, a clear message, and dedication can do, what dedication can do, and we have proven that once again. I'm very proud of the way that my running mates, Skip, Sandy, Jim, Art, and I handled ourselves throughout the campaign, and I know we'll conduct ourselves in the manner while in our respective offices. So, congratulations to the four of you also. All of this could not have happened without the perseverance and vision of our chairman and Senator Michael Testa, and the members and volunteers of the Republican Organization. I know we're not supposed to name names, but I would be missed if I didn't personally thank Senator Testa, Joe Condo, and Arvine Kilby, for all they did during this campaign, and have done for me over the past several years. It also gives me great pleasure to introduce my two undersheriffs, Michael and Thomas Sparanza. We have known each other, and worked together for over the past 25-plus years. Both Mike and Tommy started out their careers at Cumberland County Sheriff's Department in 1988, and worked various assignments at the Sheriff's Department, including the county jail. Mike transferred to the Bridgestone Police Department in 1998, and Tommy went to the Police Department in Bridgestone in 2000. Both of them have worked in multiple units within the Police Department, before being promoted to the rank of sergeant, and ultimately retiring as lieutenants in February of 2018. Excuse me, one second. Mike and Tommy bring 30 years of experience with them, and many of those years are spent working at the Sheriff's Department, which in my opinion is very important, and it was very important to me in my decision-making. So, I want to thank both of yous tonight, for taking this, taking on this responsibility, and I know that we are going to do great things together. So, thank you very much. To the county commissioners, and all of my law enforcement partners, in here in Cumberland County and throughout the state, I look forward to working with each, each and every one of you, and continue to moving Cumberland County in a positive direction. So, thank you again for coming out tonight and sharing this moment with me.
It is now my honor to call up the Honorable Rudolph Skip Luizzi, to administer the oath of surrogate. Skip? Did you want to hold it? So, Skip, hold it, your feet out this way, so the pictures can be bigger. Left hand on the, this side, get up on the stage. And Skip, if you can, please, place your left hand on the Bible, and your right hand in the air, and then, please repeat after me. "I, Rudolph Luizzi..."
"I, Rudolph Luizzi..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"I will support the Constitution..."
"...of the United States..."
"...of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"...to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and the government established..."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"...impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...justly perform..."
"...all the duties..."
"...all the duties..."
"...of the office of..."
"...of the office of..."
"...County Surrogate..."
"...County Surrogate..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations, Skip. So, Skip, it's your turn to say a few words here, so...
Yeah, I was, I just found that out when I came in tonight.
That means you get to be brief.
That's it. Thank you. The last time I took a pledge like that, I ended up in a green uniform. But anyway, I just want to thank Mike Testa, Arvine, Joe Condo, Luce, for all the help you gave me, and my family, and this campaign, and helping the general, Mike, Jim Sorrow, Sandy Taylor, Art Marshand, the greatest group of men and women that I ever worked with before, they were honorable, they were righteous, and we ran a great campaign, and I appreciate that. Also, I want to thank my family, my, my girlfriend Dana, that did more walking than I did, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yes, he was the answer. And my, and my entire Luizzi family, who are sitting in the back, and my parents, I am so proud to be here tonight, it's a great honor to be able to serve the, the county of Cumberland County, and in the words of Mel Brooks, "I'm really glad to be me, I am so happy." So, thank you all for coming out tonight, thank you for being here. contract renegotiation, okay? And next up is an individual that I've known for a very long time, and he, he's in a similar situation as I am, in that he has big shoes to fill because of his father's very well-known name, and I think tonight everyone's understanding that he is in fact filling those shoes, and that's Arthur Marshand, so, it's your turn.
And Arthur, if you can repeat after me. "I, Arthur Marshand..." "...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...of the United States..."
"...of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"...to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"...impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...all the duties..."
"...all the duties..."
"...of the office..."
"...of the office..."
"...of County Commissioner..."
"...of County Commissioner..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations.
It's an absolute honor to stand here before you today. First, I just have to thank everyone, everyone from our organization, everyone that assisted in getting us elected here tonight. That goes for anyone who knocked on a door, anyone who put out a sign, anyone that took us to an event and introduced us as some people. Without you, we would certainly not be here tonight. But most of all, I have to thank our chairman, Senator Michael Testa. I've known Michael for many, many years, and his guidance through this process, and his assistance is just amazing. And so's the entire team, including his two right hands, Joe Condo and Arvine Kilby, doing things behind the scenes that perhaps aren't as fully appreciated, but are essential for the reasons that we're all standing up here tonight, and we're celebrating. As Skip mentioned, we were blessed, running with an amazing team, an amazing team that weren't just my running mates, but became my, my close friends, almost family-like. I enjoyed going to events with them, I enjoyed seeing them, and I enjoyed spending time with them. We became very close over the course of this campaign, and there's certain things I just will never forget about the campaign. Of course, I have to thank my family, my mother and father, who've been there from me since the beginning, give me all the love and support that any son could ask for, and then, of course, my amazing wife Angela, who's with me tonight. She knocked on just as many doors as I did, if not more, she campaigned very hard, but for her, I certainly wouldn't be here tonight. At the beginning, when I decided to make this journey, I told everyone I was running, and I had three really good reasons, and they were my children, it was Emily, Ella, and AJ. Now, you might notice, we only have one out of the three here tonight. Now, two of them feeling a little under the weather, so I told them they could, you know, watch this on YouTube. And then, my reason for running was very simple, was for the youth of Cumberland County, it was to improve Cumberland County, it was to make it a place where we can have young people like my children, like your children and your grandchildren, where they would be able to work, live, and raise their families. And over the next three years, that will be my singular focus in office. I thank you very much, and God bless.
I'm getting to be a pro at administering oaths of office at this point, and it really is just such a distinct honor to serve as your senator, and to be part of this monumental ceremony. It is my distinct honor to introduce you to your Commissioner Sandra Taylor. Sandy, if, who's coming up, is Stoltz? There you are. You guys are pros, absolute pros. Just repeat after me. "I, Sandra Taylor..."
"I, Sandra Taylor..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...of the United States..."
"...of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...and the Constitution..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...of the State of New Jersey..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"...to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"...impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...all the duties..."
"...all the duties..."
"...of the office of..."
"...of the office of..."
"...County Commissioner..."
"...County Commissioner..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...for the County of Cumberland..."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations, Madam Commissioner, thank you. for the county of Cumberland
for the county of Cumberland
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations, Madam Commissioner. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank you all for coming out. It's a great honor and privilege to be able to serve the residents of Cumberland County. And I have to say that, um, this would never be possible without the guidance and leadership of our Senator Michael Testa. He has an amazing team. He answers any question that we had. He guided us through this process. And, you know, at the end of the day, we were all victorious. I have a great group of running mates that I am so happy that were elected to office. I would like to thank my family, my friends, and everyone who gave us all the love and support that we needed to push through this process. God bless and have a good night. Thank you.
While all of these are special, this next individual is someone that I've probably known the absolute longest in my political career, so to speak. We met at his office in 2008, early 2008. So that means I'm not young anymore, and that I've been involved in this game of politics for quite a long time. It is my distinct honor to get to administer the oath of office to my dear friend, Jim Sorrow. Come on up, Jimmy. Folks, there's labels on everything these days, and I'm looking down and I'm seeing a label that says "Speak into the mic." As if... Isn't that what a microphone is for? I mean, if we need labels like that, we're, we're in bigger trouble than I thought. Jimmy, if you could please place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and repeat after me. I, James R. Sorrow,
I, James R. Sorrow,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
of the state of New Jersey
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly perform
and justly perform
all the duties
all the duties
of the office of
of the office of
county commissioner
county commissioner
for the county of Cumberland
county of Cumberland
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Jimmy.
Reverend, real quick. Rock of Salvation, 1999, November 14th. Fourth time running, okay? Hopefully a couple more times, maybe.
Thank you.
I'm gonna speak into the mic. And it, it actually says, "Speak into the mic." Now, I'm speechless. You really, people believe that? Come on, really? I'm speechless? No, I don't think so. Um, listen. I'm the guy that, uh, they, they didn't want to say the old guy. So I was the experienced guy. It's when one of my colleagues, my running mates, went, "Wow, he's really experienced." And I could take that kind of stuff, but I kind of drew the line when they wanted to do the carbon dating. Okay, so we, we, we did away with that. But the, the experience, uh, I'm so happy to be back. I really am. I had work that I wanted to do, that I didn't get to do the last couple of times around, and and now with a historic 7-0 bore, I think we can do that. I really do believe that we're gonna move Cumberland County forward. I want to thank all of you for being here, because we couldn't have done it without you. I want to thank the people of Cumberland County who voted for us and gave their confidence in their vote to us, because they're expecting big things to happen from us, and I think we can deliver. We're gonna work hard for you. I want to thank my wife. She's been putting up with me for the last 10 years, when I'm doing all this uh, public campaigning, not counting the ones I'd lost, but, uh, and I want to thank our chairman, because it couldn't have been, it couldn't happen without Michael and Arvin and Condo. By the way, it's more than 90 seconds. I just started to let you know that. Okay, I just, you know, he, he told 90 seconds for all of us, but that wasn't gonna happen either. We're here to serve you. And I really do believe that the team we have, I gotta thank my, my teammates, and I call them teammates because we worked very, very hard together. Michael was the general, and we did everything Michael told us to do. Am I right, Michael? Yes, you're great. Along with my two other running mates for commissioner, and of course, the county surrogate, Skip Louiezy. Uh, and I'm talking about Sandy Taylor and Art Marchand. Uh, couldn't have done it without them. The, the dedication they had through all of this. So you're gonna expect a lot of great things from us, and you want to know something, I think we're gonna deliver for you. That's the promise I will give you, and politicians aren't supposed to make promises. But here's what I will promise you. We will work as hard as we possibly can and give you everything we possibly can. And we're gonna pray to God that he gives us the wisdom and the knowledge to make the right decisions. Thank you.
I hope we're not standing between you all and your next meal. Because you are gonna hear a few of us speak, and the next person that you're going to hear speak is Deputy Director Tony Romero, who's just honestly, I've gotten to know Tony over the last decade plus, and I think you would have a hard time finding a finer human being with such an American story. It's just absolutely wonderful, and it's really my honor to have Deputy Director Romero come up here and speak and address this crowd. Tony.
Love you too. Wow. When I walked through this door today, I thought we were in trouble with all these uniforms around. But I, I couldn't be a happier person to have Mike Donato. You know, he worked very hard, and, and he deserves more than all of us, you know, this, this greatness of being elected as, you know, as a new sheriff. And my heart is with you, Mike. It's a pleasure to be here. You know, I didn't, I didn't have all this two years ago because of COVID going on three, so it's great to be here. It's great to be, uh, a team. A team. This is my team. Everybody here, we saw commit, we, we, it came in through us. Uh, Senator Testa, uh, he's the, the wing leader. I mean, he, he's worked very hard to get us here. And, and, you know, we, everybody here gives him a hard time because we are a smart grouping, uh, group, and, and, um, but you know what? We did it your way. And, and I thank you. And, uh, and, and I, seven commissioners. I hate to, I hate to say this, but this is seven commissioners, first time in history that we have this. You know, we have seven commissioners came out of the Republican Party to serve you. That was the main thing through all this, is to sit down and listen to Mike every other Saturday and tell us, and prepares us for, for this moment. And I'm very grateful that he has. I mean, he, he's worked very hard to get us here. This is my second time as Deputy Director, and, uh, you know, I, I thank all of them for giving me the opportunity to do so, to be the first Hispanic ever to held this position. And this is an opportunity that Mike has given us here, and, and all of us. A great team. The county people that we have worked with us, that every day go to work, and we call them 10 times a day to get answers, to learn more about the county, because it doesn't stop. Every day is a new day. So it, it doesn't stop. Uh, I mean, I couldn't thank her anymore. Maybe I must call her the mother of this team. I, you know, I, I hate to say that, but, you know, the, you're, you're there for us. And when I, and I'm not a speaker, but when I come here, I speak from my heart. This is the people that really went out and did it for us. John Carr, Jeff Richway, Paige, and Kim has been with us ever since. You know, she's probably been with us for like eight, nine years, you know, working with us. And everybody here that you see, not just the candidate, knocked on doors. I went out and knocked on doors. Silvio went out and knocked on doors. And this is the team that we have created. There's no tomorrow. Every day we run. And that's the way it should be. So I'm very proud to be your Deputy Director. I'm very proud to represent you, because you are the most important thing to us. So thank you.
So now you're going to hear from your new director. I've had the opportunity to get to know Joe Silvio for quite a number of years. He and my father go pretty far back. And we had a conversation the other day, and I imparted a portion of that conversation on Joe's wife and daughter, who are here in attendance, that, you know, being the director of a Board of Commissioners is a very distinct fraternity in the state of New Jersey. There's only 21 counties in the state of New Jersey, and there are only 21 directors. So when you start to think about that Venn diagram of people that you're, that you're in, you're one of 21 people in, in the entire state of New Jersey. And, you know, I, I didn't want to have to tell them this, there's only 40 senators. So I'm one of 40, he's one of 21. That's pretty cool. And it is really my distinct honor to introduce your new director of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Joseph Silvio.
I had to write things down. I'm not, uh, as good at speaking, speaking to the mic. So first of all, they say start off with a joke. I was gonna go, "Seven commissioners welcome to a bar," but that doesn't work too well. But I'd like to just say a few words, please. I'm deeply honored. And I'd like to thank my wife, my family, and everyone who has guided and supported myself and placed their faith in me. I am truly grateful this, for this opportunity to represent the county. As your new director, I am very humbled of the title that has been bestowed on me, but more so because of the caliber of commissioners that I'm going to work with. I will have a privilege to serve this county comprised of professionals that work with dedication. Thomas Jefferson said, "Far and away, the best price that life offers is the chance to work hard at something that's worth doing." It's a gift of life to do the work that makes a difference. But because of our work is so important and can have a major impact on our people's lives, it comes with a great responsibility to make sure we get it right. Our goals this year are motivated by desire, to do all that we can do to make continued effective operation of this county. We will appoint new liaisons for different departments. We will organize and manage committees more effectively. It will be my privilege to communicate all the performances from all the different departments as well. I will foster and encourage the growth of an extraordinary county, which is Cumberland County, and will personally be of service to as many residents as I can possibly do. I want to thank you again for the faith that they've all placed in me. And for the privilege to serve as director, I welcome your thoughts, your suggestions, and your opinions. I will do my best for you and the future of the county. God bless Cumberland County. God bless the state of New Jersey, and God bless America. Thank you very much.
Melissa, you wrote a fabulous speech. I'm only kidding. So I get the opportunity to make a couple remarks. And I'm gonna choose my words wisely. I'm someone that does not write speeches. I speak from the heart. And you take a look at your Board of Commissioners and you see seven individuals that I can tell you I've worked very closely with over the years, and they represent a team. And you heard that this is a monumental victory, that this is the first time in Cumberland County's history that you have a 7-0 Republican Board. And that's true. But I'm here to tell you that these seven individuals aren't working as a Republican team. They're working as a team to represent each and every citizen of Cumberland County. That's what these fine individuals are here to do, and that they are going to do, and they've made a promise. Once the election's over, it's time to govern. These individuals are going to be governing Cumberland County in a new direction. Look, we've all seen some of the numbers and statistics about Cumberland County. This is our home. I have the pleasure of being born and raised in the city of Ireland. I still live in the city of Ireland. I'm the senator for Legislative District One, which encompasses a large portion of Cumberland County, and I happen to be the chairman of the Cumberland GOP. Cumberland County matters to me. Cumberland County matters to these seven individuals. As I've said many times, people get involved in the political game for all of the wrong reasons. They want a cool lapel pin. They want a really cool license plate. These seven individuals, your surrogate and your sheriff, got into this public service, and that's what we are. We are public servants. They got into this for all of the right reasons. That's why they ran. That's why they ran so hard. That's why they've gelled as a team. That's why they're going to work as a team. And they are going to represent you, and all of you are going to be really proud. So I say this. I took this line from another political figure who thanked a lot of individuals who voted for him. And he stood up before a crowd and he said, "I want to thank every single person that voted me into office." And for those of you who did not vote for these seven individuals, give them a chance. I guarantee you, if you give them a chance and you see the progress that they are able to bring to Cumberland County, you're gonna change your mind. This is a monumental moment in Cumberland County's history. We are at the precipice of greatness. I am positive of it. You have great leadership from top to bottom. I can tell you that myself, Assemblyman McClellan, Assemblyman Simonsen, are going to be working hand in hand with this Board of Commissioners, with our sheriff, with our surrogate, to make sure that they are being the public servants that you voted for or didn't vote for, but the public servants that you deserve. There are so many things, when you turn on the television or listen to the radio, that are broken about government. I'm here to tell you, you're going to be proud of this Board of Commissioners because they are not broken. They are a team. Are they going to agree all of the time? No. Who does? Who agrees all of the time? But you know what? They're going to be a team with their eye on the prize, that it is the betterment of Cumberland County that is the goal. We have something to be very, very proud of here. Give this Board of Commissioners a chance to shine, and I'm positive that they will. May God bless each and every one of you. Happy New Year to you all, and let's hear it for Cumberland County. I have one more individual to introduce. His church is aptly named. The Rock of Salvation. This individual I've gotten to know since I ran for office in 2019 the first time. He is a He is a rock of our community. He is always there. He's on the local radio stations. He is someone that, if you do not know him, you should get to know him, because he's a person that matters and a person that deeply cares about Cumberland County. Pastor Benjamin Ocasio.
God bless everyone this evening. I congratulate the new Commissioners coming on board, the surrogate and the sheriff. Our prayer is that God will continue to bless you and give you wisdom. And ask you to please stand as we do our prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day you've given us, and we thank you for this evening that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for these men and women that have chosen to serve this community, Lord. Lord, you know their hearts, their desire, Lord. And so we pray, Lord, that you will continue to give them wisdom and guidance, Lord, and they'll be able to work as a team, as we've heard here tonight, Lord, that they'll be able to put forth the plans, the vision that you have for Cumberland County, Lord. You know the needs that are in this county, Lord. So we pray, Lord, that as a family, as a community, Lord, as a county, we will unite together like never before, and we will see changes in this county, Lord. We pray, Lord, that you will guide us, give us wisdom and understanding, Lord. And we pray, Lord, as we leave this place, but, Lord, that you will protect us, and you will guide us, Lord, and that we will have a good evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Happy New Year to all.
Folks, just remember that there are refreshments outside. Please, they're there for a reason. Please avail yourself of those refreshments. Thank you all.